Do you know how to make paintings?
No, I don't. Flip it. Could you show me? If I bring the stuff in, would you show me?
Yeah, you bring it in.
Paint that best. Can you show me how to do it? All right, it is nine AM. Oh, she's getting the.
Trying to round them up out there.
So the fiscal from fifteen forty-five is in route, not here. Chester is not here, and I don't think Perry is here yet.
Okay, is anybody else?
Yeah, we have the library.
There's the library here?
The city of Chardon and we have Burton Village.
While we're waiting for their fiscal, let's bring the library. Whoever's first that has everybody here, we'll start with them. Do you know who that would be? Jaga Library? Okay, let's go ahead and do them.
Burton, right.
Burton Library?
Yeah.
Whoever's whoever's here, let's bring them in, let's get started. I mean, we've got some high-priced people up here that are burning the clock.
Yeah, Ron could be on the phone, this is informing Adrian right now.
We we have everyone.
Oh, you do?
Good morning.
Good morning. We're good?
Fifteen forty-five, Chester's on the way.
So let's um, let's get started. So it's nine oh one, today is August twentieth, twenty twenty-four. This is a continuation of the annual budget hearings for Jaga County. First up this morning is the Russell Park fifteen forty-five. Kristin, can you start with the numbers, please?
Sure. Russell fifteen forty-five district submitted their twenty twenty-five budget with a beginning cash balance in their general fund of thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars and forty-eight cents. They requested revenue in the amount of nine thousand, six fifty-two and eight cents. Revenue for consideration is five thousand, three eighty-two, twenty-eight. Estimated expenses are at ten thousand, four seventy-six. Ending cash balance of twenty-nine thousand, seven eighty-nine, seventy-six. Land purchase fund has beginning cash balance of fifty-one thousand, three sixty-seven, thirty-eight. Not showing any revenue or expenses, leaving the same beginning cash balance. They have no revenues.
Let's go first.
Uh, I will, very quickly, you are, you're fully invested with these cash balances, right? In a, what kind of interest vehicle?
We have Star Ohio and First National Bank.
Is First National Bank paying you about four and a half percent?
No, they are not.
You should call them.
I have talked with them and they really didn't think that they could better that rate. I think we're at one point four. But I I agree.
Talked to some other banks today to move it around. You should be getting about four and a half overnight money. Okay, also, uh, I'm a bit concerned in the general funds, you have a, uh, you know, we're not talking about a lot of money.
Right.
Or percentage-wise.
It's huge.
It's a percentage guy.
So you you indicate you've got, uh, forty grand in the bank, but you're only spending about a thousand dollars. That means you have forty times the money that you need.
Our expenses are ten thousand.
So they have two funds, Chris, they have a general fund and then they have an acquisition fund. The general fund will have an ending balance of, uh, about thirty-four thousand, I believe.
Forty-three, four eighty-eight.
Oh, that what year is that?
Two thousand twenty-five.
Ending balance?
Ending balance, twenty-nine thousand, seven eighty-nine, seventy-six.
No, that's twenty-four.
Fifty-one, three sixty-seven out there.
Well, that's the cap, the capital one is fifty-one, three sixty-seven.
They can't use that for much of anything.
The general fund I have.
Fund balance thirty-four thousand, fifty-nine, yeah.
Which is based on their estimated revenue and not what we're certifying though.
But we did, uh, fifty-three hundred, they're gonna, oh, I see. I'm missing a digit. Okay.
You want me to look for it?
Well, this indicates you you still have, uh, more than three times the cash needed to pay for the expenses. That's a lot of money.
Right.
In your budget.
I asked for a raise.
The ten thousand in expenses, what is that you being used for?
Um, it is for myself as a fiscal officer. It is the insurance, um, the bonding, um, advertising, website.
What do you get paid as a fiscal officer?
Uh, I think I budgeted, uh, three thousand a year.
So.
And it hasn't, I don't think it's reached that, but that's what I budgeted.
So you're gonna, so you have fifty-three hundred dollars in yearly revenue, three thousand of which is paying you. You don't manage any properties?
No.
Not acquiring any properties?
No, I'm not at this.
You're the only employee?
Right.
Okay, I should, you know, again, it's nothing personal, but you're you're a bureaucracy that exists for no reason and you're spending ten thousand dollars of taxpayer funds and the taxpayers are getting nothing.
It seems redundant, yes.
Yeah, I mean, that's that's just my issue. There's not much I can do about it because I don't think we can take away the fifty-three hundred bucks, but.
Well, there's no mechanisms.
Yeah, but if I could, I would. So that's all I have.
So. Well, then we have asked for the, we have asked for money from the township. In in April of twenty twenty-one, the county started sending the money to this township instead of sending it to the park board. Or giving it straight out of the county to the park board. So now they send it to the township and then we have to go to the township and ask for it. So I have done that and they, uh, just this last week and they indicated they're inclined to give it to us, but we wouldn't get that until twenty twenty-five.
So in twenty twenty-one, the county as a whole re-reevaluated the local government fund formula.
Right.
Um, the formula, um, had historically had parks included in it. However, um, there is nothing in statute that requires them. They're actually not participating members. It was a gift. Um, in reevaluating it, we approached the county, the municipalities who are participants, who have to vote on that local government fund. And they overwhelmingly elected to have the money go to the respective municipalities and then they determine what park initiatives they wish to fund or don't wish to fund. As a whole, all of the entities in the county were advantaged by more than the amount of money that was going to a particular park. Um, the exception being Russell, and that's because of how many parks it has under its authority. So they are the anomaly. Uh, Hunting Valley actually was removed from the equation, um, because we did not believe it was appropriate to carve that section out for Hunting Valley for the few people they have in the county. Um, but that decision was made by the vote of the bodies benefiting from the local government fund. So while it is being sent to the local governments, it is entirely their call whether they choose to distribute it or don't. Um, and we have no authority to make them distribute. But anyway, um, you know, I mind you pretty straightforward, basically reiterating, you have about thirty-one percent carryover, which is adequate to survive. Um, the special revenue fund is fifty-one thousand dollars. It's going to sit idle and earn money until you either buy something or you don't. I mean, it's it's just going to sit there. Um, the question I had was, you know, is this a UAN or is this a, is this a UAN converted stretchy?
Yeah.
Okay, so that that I just wanted to make sure that you were using UAN in the history that goes with it. The only last thing that I have, which actually was post this, I just, I don't know why I thought of it, but just a couple of days ago, I reached out to my staff. We have to house all of your bonds. That's a requirement of my office. The duty of my office is simply to hold them. Um, but I thought since you were coming here for a budget hearing, I would have my staff go through the budget, the bond binder, and make sure that we have current bonds and we cannot find a current bond for all of your your officers. You you have only Christopher Harris' current bond. So you've got to get that right. Because in your audit cycle, they're going to ask us to produce the bonds.
Right.
We don't have them. We have some legacy bonds, but they expire. So bonds have a beginning time and an ending time. I I think we have an old one from you.
Yours expired in twenty twenty-three December.
Yeah, so you you'll just need to get with your bond and they just need to change that and then resubmit.
I think we have, I think we have bonds probably.
But maybe we just don't have it.
Yes, I just need to get them to you.
You have to get into my office, you have to be the the record keeper of that because the auditor is going to ask them from you and then from us. And if they're not from both parties, it's an audit violation.
Okay, okay, I will get them.
Right, because anybody should be able to query my office and say, who who are the bondholders in the event of an issue?
Sure.
Especially when you're sitting on fifty-one thousand dollars in tax money, right? It's protection for you, it's protection for anyone.
And I did, I was asked to bring the, um, the applicable legal.
Yeah, so generally we ask for that just to make sure the public has been notified.
Yes.
Your budget.
I have the the budget hearing and today's.
Yeah, it wasn't in the packet, so I guess they must have asked.
Yes.
We just keep it in the file. So again, if the auditor
Sure.
of state during your audit says, please provide us everything in the file, they get it all and they say, okay, you did this, you did this, you did this, check, check, check. And you don't require a schedule A and B because you don't receive any tax money at this time. You you have no current levies, right?
No.
Until you have a current levy, that mechanism doesn't kick in. Okay?
Okay.
That's all I have. Um, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Some jurors, you'll use that for temporaries at the end of the year. Don't use it before that. Don't use it for, no, don't use it for this year's.
Thank you.
Okay, good, thank you all.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, a good one. Okay, next up is Chester Park. Come on up.
Gentlemen, good morning.
Morning. How's everybody?
Good, well, yeah, well, we miss you at Rotary.
Yeah, well, you know, seven o'clock mornings were killing me.
I it it.
I had to move a bunch of meetings and then I never got to work on time and it's tough. And and the venue kept changing.
It does.
Which was hard.
It's where the Methodist Church, so.
Okay.
Permanent, which is good.
Okay, we're going to open the hearing for Chester Township Park. Um, Kristin, can you start with the, um, with the with the numbers?
Yes. Chester Township Park District submitted their twenty twenty-five budget with a beginning cash balance in the general fund of eleven thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars. They requested revenue in the amount of thirteen thousand, fifty-four dollars. The revenue for consideration is fourteen thousand, four eighty-two. Estimated expenses, eighteen thousand, one hundred and ninety-four. Ending cash balance, seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven. They have no levies.
Um, let's go first.
Very well done. You have one of the best parks in the county. Thank you. Just make sure when nobody's there, turn the lights off.
At the pickleball, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, very nice.
Volleyball last year, pickleball this year.
Yeah.
Well, last year.
Yeah, unlike our last submission, you guys do a lot with a little bit of money.
Yeah.
They do nothing with the same amount of money.
A little bit more money.
Yeah, kind of incredible. So very good job, very well done.
Message is, you know, Chester has been made more than whole on what you were getting from local government fund. So they really have no leg to stand on to not give you what, at least what you were getting before, because they're making money for top of it.
They haven't given us anything yet.
If you need an advocate for that, I'm happy to personally be an advocate. Um, they're actually coming later on today to talk about a few things. Told us the board that, even though we have no direct influence on them, I think the intention of what we did was to not cost townships who didn't have parks the layer that was being cut out for parks. Basically, everyone in the county was supporting all the parks. And we're already doing that with a levy to the to the park district. So the logic was let's fund the townships, which will actually get more money and they could more than fund their current parks. Some have, some haven't. I mean, and the only pickle was Russell because they have more parks than they have money, but well, it's misnomer.
Well, I mean, yeah, you guys do a wonderful job. The township hasn't given you the windfall they received from that.
They haven't.
And, um, it it's kind of embarrassing because they have, uh, an embarrassingly high cash balance in their general fund.
Yeah, so their their hearing was yesterday, their their budget was not passed because of their carryover. Um, so they're coming back in, um, but you know, I I think you have a very good argument with them and I would encourage you to to do that in a public meeting. Say, hey, if you need the numbers, Ryan, can you get them, the numbers that they were getting before with local government on the old formula and then what Chester is getting now under the new formula? And that number they're getting now is greater than what you were getting before.
And I think before it was like seventy-five thousand.
Um, no, it it was a, it was like seventy-five hundred, maybe, or fifty-five hundred. It was a smaller number, but
Talk about.
Just a part for the purpose. We'll crank it both ways, what it what it would have been under the old formula, what it is under the new formula, you'll see they have a windfall. And the argument is easily, just give us what we had before, right? I mean, could give us all of it, but without looking greedy, you could all always argue you're better, you're still ahead, right? What's the complaint? And I I think they just need to have that pointed out to them.
I mean, they'd be giving us annually ten thousand property expenses. They haven't given it this year yet. It's already August, so.
They had to write that check pretty soon because that would have helped their their submission, actually.
Maybe like if they'd given you five hundred thousand, it might help their submission.
Well, and the ten thousand that would have been anticipated last year went to contribution to the pickleball courts, right?
So it's already allocated out.
Yes, it was, yes.
Yeah, again, you guys don't have any overhead. I mean, you know, you're not, th- this isn't some bureaucracy. This is, you know, something that's doing great things for the township and it's funny, all the Chester's facilities are falling apart and they've got millions of dollars in the bank, but the the park is the best thing they got going and they aren't financially supporting it.
Why am I not surprised?
Disappointing, so it's your vote. Second, yes.
Yes. All our bonds are in place here to picture. Yeah, I did not have an issue with yours. We'll check. A little bit, I I just had a little concern of the other. It's kind of the.
We have an audit this year coming up.
I doubt you'll have a problem.
Well, the board sincerely appreciates you stepping up Chuck to say you'd be an advocate to assist us with.
Absolutely.
With helping with that.
I think the intention of why we proposed the change as it was, was to benefit parks and not cost a taxpayer in a township additional money.
Yeah, they don't want the other side.
Um, that's for your temporaries at the end of the year, right? Okay?
Take care. Gentlemen, thank you so much for your time today.
Thanks, take care. Okay, moving along, uh, next is the Russell Citizens Park five eleven. Hey, how you doing, Perry?
Good morning.
What's new? Um, we're going to open the hearing for the the Russell Citizens Park five eleven. Uh, Kristin, can you start with the numbers, please?
Sure. Russell Township Citizens five eleven Park District submitted their twenty twenty-five budget with a beginning cash balance in the general fund. Two thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars, forty-two cents. Requested revenue in the amount of seven thousand. The revenue for consideration will be seven thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents. Estimated expenses, six thousand dollars, leaving an ending cash balance of four thousand, five thirty-two and seventy cents. They have no levies.
Would like to go first?
So what's the seventh out? What do you guys spend in the, uh, six thousand?
We have a secretary, we have bonds, insurance, website domain. Accountants, post office backs, uh, insurance on the Oberschugren Reserve, UAN. Office supplies, we have miscellaneous, just in case. Uh, we have rent for Oberschugren, which comes to six thousand dollars.
Are you doing anything with that? Is that accessible? Are you doing any projects with that property?
Yes, we have, we're going to work, hopefully start building a a bridge. Uh, we've got monies uh, this year from the trustees and we're going to build a bridge, but then Western Reserve Bank has already said, ah, there's too much erosion of this spat, let's try another spat. So we're going to be working on that one. We're just waiting for First Energy to give us permission to go across their property to get our property.
So so the the upper portion of Russell that has the sparks, um, the five eleven has kind of taken that over.
So you're managing that.
So that's township owned. That was not transferred through the fifteen forty-five, to the fifteen forty-five. Which then transferred everything to Jaga Parks under contract.
So unlike the other one, they're.
They're actually making, and and to be honest with you, and I, this is just because I live there and I I've experienced what they're doing. That Upper Preserve has never really had good access to anybody, for anybody.
Anybody, yes.
It's it's a client, and and their mission has been to get access for people. And so that unfortunately takes time and money. Um, they're on a very short, uh, short budget and but every year we seem to be at least moving the ball down the field.
Well, they're spending four thousand dollars less than the other park and the other park doesn't do any. So.
Yes.
Good job for me.
My my notes indicate the bridge is about a thirty thousand dollar expenditure.
Correct.
So that will happen this year?
If the trustees fund it?
Trustees have funded it.
Oh, they have?
Half of it, and we we have, we had money in the bank too to fund the other half.
Okay.
We've, uh, submitted a form to First Energy to cross their property. We're just hearing back from that. Once we get that, okay, we'll go ahead with the contractor.
Where where do you have that other money stashed?
In the general fund.
No, you mean it's a banking institution?
No, I'm I'm sorry. This shows you only have twenty-five hundred dollars anticipated.
At the end of, it's beginning of twenty twenty-five. We hope to use it all in twenty twenty-four.
So that's that thirty-seven thousand dollars.
Thirty thousand dollars for the bridge, yes.
Yeah. So where did that? If you have a starting cash balance of eleven thousand dollars in two thousand twenty-three. You actually had twenty thousand dollars. You've only got income of six thousand dollars. You have some off-budget income that gets you up to that thirty-seven thousand dollars that you can spend?
We have fifteen thousand dollars.
Coming this year?
They have revenue of seven thousand, seven thousand, Chris, in twenty twenty-five.
The trustees gave them.
Thirty-five hundred from the public library and set, and thirty-five hundred from the trustees. In twenty-five. This year they getting fifteen thousand from the trustees, uh, three, a little over three thousand from the public library.
But that fifteen grand isn't reflected in the estimated revenue, right?
Yeah, it is. It's under their, oh, no, we don't certify that because that's a, that's, it's certified under other other income. Yeah, so it is your, uh.
So they do have the cash.
Estimated revenue. So you don't, you didn't, you don't certify.
Twenty-four.
Yeah, they have the month, look at twenty-four.
This is twenty-five. Last year it was certified.
Correct.
I'm, yeah, I'm sorry, I got my.
You gotta look at the other sheet.
Yeah.
Okay.
That was, that's this year. This year it was certified.
Yes.
From last year. Correct, got it.
Move to approve.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck with the bridge.
Thank you, yeah. Over the River Qui.
Yeah, glad someone's building bridges.
They're going to hand, they're going to hand you your certificate.
Yeah, you'll need this for your temporary appropriations at the end of the year. Don't use it before then. Um, oftentimes people get those confused in the year and they start using that one. Not a good thing. Right? Good, good seeing you.
Have a good day.
Thanks, man. See you. Okay, Jaga Library.
Bye.
See you, Perry.
Bye.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, we're going to open the hearing for Jaga Public Library. Kristin, can you start with the, um, the numbers, please?
Sure. Jaga County Public Library submitted their twenty twenty-five budget with a beginning cash balance in their general fund of three million, six hundred and twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and seventy-six dollars. They requested revenue in the amount of nine million, six hundred and fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight. The revenue which will be considered is nine million, seven hundred and thirteen. The revenue which will be considered is nine million, seven hundred and thirteen thousand, three sixty-three and forty-one cents. Estimated expenses are at ten million, three hundred and fifteen thousand, sixteen dollars, leaving an ending cash balance of three million, twenty-one thousand, three twenty-three and forty-one cents. They have a debt service fund with a beginning cash balance of three hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars. They requested revenue in the amount of one million, thirty thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars, which we will consider. Estimated expense is at one million, three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, eight sixty-three, leaving an ending cash balance of eleven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one. They have a four fifty capital improvement fund with beginning cash balance of four million, eight hundred and seventy-three thousand, five eighty-nine. They requested revenue in the amount of seventy-five thousand, which would be considered. Estimated expenses, four million, eight hundred and seventy-three thousand, five eighty-nine, leaving an ending cash balance of seventy-five thousand. They have two reserve fund accounts established. They have total millage for taxure twenty-four, twenty-five. Two mil outside general fund, point two four, and a bond levy fund for a total of two point two four.
I'll be happy to do the first.
Sure.
So I'm looking at the mechanics of your budget. There are no, no issues. The general fund is showing a modest carryover, twenty-seven percent. That's arguably even low. I mean, if you consider overall
Don't encourage them. Oh, my gosh.
That's incredibly high, that twenty-seven. We're expecting you to shave two percent out of that right there. The only question, I think I talked to you about it, Lisa, is that the unencumbered versus encumbered balance beginnings of one of the reports is flipped.
Incorrect, yeah.
So we'll clean that up. It doesn't affect any of your submissions. I have had numerous very good telephone calls with Chris and over the course of the last year. And I will say, I am very empathetic to your efforts to build a new, a new library. I know you must feel like Charlie Brown in the football because you get three quarters of the way there. And lo and behold, the football gets pulled out from under you and then you feel, I'm paraphrasing, but you've expressed a feeling of pressure that you don't want to disappoint this commission by holding money and having it designated as being irresponsible or anything else. I am completely satisfied that you have done more than any human could do. And you will get there and I'm confident of that. It may not be tomorrow, but it may be by the end of August sometime, hopefully. But in a I'm a filibuster.
This meeting to go finalize the purchase agreement with our attorneys. It's, it could possibly be the end.
I thought you were saying the end of the day.
I'm sure there'll be more revisions after today.
You're done with your time now?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have the time, any time I have.
I hear about direct the balance of your time, Mr. President.
Do you have anything or no? You're good?
I'm going to hold off.
Yeah, I agree a hundred percent with Chuck. I mean, I think Yeah, sorry, Chris. Well, again, I guess I have the advantage of having some knowledge because of my position that maybe others don't. I know you have tried very hard. Unfortunately, other stakeholders, like the county government, for example, who should, should be supporting you, have been an obstacle and that's unfortunate. And I'm sorry for that. It's not my fault, but I'm still very sorry for that. That has been an issue. But I agree with Chuck. I know you've tried hard. You've put this money away. You've listened, listened to us. You've put this money away. And I think the goal here is to try to either refurbish or build a facility without going back to the taxpayers. And if you accomplish that, I think that will be one of the biggest wins I've ever seen as a member of this commission. Because everybody else, as soon as they want to build anything, just runs out and asks for more money and does not even assess whether or not they really need that. And you have developed a very comprehensive plan to avoid asking the taxpayers for more money. And, and you've done very well living within your means. So I commend you and, and good luck with this latest thing, hopefully. You know, now that you're not dealing with, with some of these other folks, maybe you'll actually get a comp. They won't be able to thwart your plans.
We passed the seventy-five percent mark. We're in the nineties.
Do you want to check your watch or are you okay?
You're done with your plans?
I'm all done. Yes.
So as soon as you have that purchase agreement, go public. So everybody will finally know, yes, it's going to happen.
Yes.
And make, just please, please, please make sure it happens.
Oh, yeah. Yes.
It's, she has her blog post already written. I asked her this morning.
Ready. As soon as we have the first agreement.
And my wife will hope it will represent the architecture of our county.
We've heard over and over.
Yes, that's what we've heard in our meetings with the city.
Will it be within five hundred yards of where we're sitting?
When I alluded to the county thwarting their plans, that was with regard to this building.
Oh.
I don't think it will be within five hundred yards of where we're sitting.
A thousand yards?
Within a mile of
We could, we could go into executive session. If you want to call me later today, I can chat with you about it.
She has to kill.
It will be within the city limits of Chardon, Chris. How about that?
Okay.
Yes, it will be within the city limits of Chardon.
Is it, is it my motion?
Yes.
I submit.
It's been the best library hearing in about ten years.
We've worked very hard.
Kills him to lift that, by the way.
I saw him walking.
Chris, you got a second?
Second.
Yes.
Hi.
Yes.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you very much. See you. Don't forget to send Kristen's, you know, happy information.
I won't.
It's a social media post. You won't find out about it for two weeks.
I'll screenshot it.
Eventually it'll get in the paper. We'll get
Yeah, you'll read it in three weeks. Because Martha will tell you. Okay, we're going to open the hearing for the city of Chardon. Kristen, when you get a minute, you can start with the numbers.
City of Chardon submitted their twenty twenty-five tax budget with a beginning cash balance in their general fund of one million, three hundred and sixty-four thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars. They requested revenue in the amount of nine million, seven hundred and sixty-six thousand, eight eighty-three. Revenue for consideration is nine million, seven hundred and sixty-five thousand, one seventy-six. Estimated expenses are at nine million, six hundred and eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars, leaving an ending cash balance, one million, four hundred and forty thousand, six forty-seven. Police levy fund has a beginning cash balance of three thousand, six oh one. Requested revenue in the amount of a hundred and ninety-one, four ninety-four, which will be considered. Estimated expenses, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-one. Ending cash balance, seven thousand, four thirty-four. Fire and ambulance has a beginning cash balance of five hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight thirty-seven. Requested revenue in the amount of a hundred and thirty thousand, two ninety-five, which will be considered. Ending estimated expenses, one million, four hundred and forty-one thousand, nine seventy-four, leaving a negative cash balance of seven hundred and eighty-two thousand, eight forty-two. Police pension fund has a beginning cash balance of eighty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty-two, two dollars. Requested revenue in the amount of three hundred and one thousand, five fifty-seven, which will be considered. Estimated expenses, two hundred and eighty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars, leaving an ending cash balance of a hundred and one thousand, seven eighty-nine. Total millage for taxure twenty-four, twenty-five, two point seven inside general, point three inside police pension, for outside police, for a total of seven mills. They do have a fire and EMS renewal levy on the ballot for seven mills, which includes an increase of one point five.
So let me only say, because of your income tax side of the house, we don't see that. My concern is the police levy results show you have a cash balance of seventy-four hundred dollars that's not going to be your guys for a week. So from a budget perspective, it'd be much better if that number was significant. Strictly from a budget perspective.
Part of the revenue transfer.
Yeah, I understand that.
What's in your income tax? What's the balance of your income tax fund right now? It's part of the general?
Yeah, we could separate it out.
But it's not on our balance sheet, so I guess what's in there?
It's part of the general fund.
Well, they don't see the actual line item.
We don't see the line item.
Oh, for revenue? Seven million?
Seven million a year?
Yeah, so twenty twenty-five budget amount for certain taxes, estimate to be a bit over seven million.
Yeah, I was just confused with the numbers. If you look at the second sheet of ours. So it looks like you injected some, I'm assuming, income tax money into the general fund, which you had an estimated beginning balance this year of six hundred and seventy-five thousand. So it jumped up to three million, but your revenue and expenses are pretty much the same. But then the estimated beginning balance in twenty-five doesn't make sense unless you're, unless there's some transfer out of there, is it?
Yeah, I think some of these beginning balances on each sheet are not. Right?
Okay.
On your sheet.
Yeah, that just didn't, but I mean, your police departments, you're pretty much fun that out of your income tax, right? I mean, the levies. Levy will buy you like a police car and a So, okay. So that's, and what's your police budget a year?
Two million.
Okay.
The largest.
Okay, that was all I had.
The only question I had was on your fire levy. Are you, I'm assuming you're showing deficits, a deficit because of the levy. That is correct. So you did not include the revenue because you can't, because you don't know the past. So that drove it. And I'm hoping you have a contingency plan. You don't have to share it, but nothing's so sure.
Yes, that's what we've always done. It's where you tell this November to do it.
I'm recognizing. Other than that, I, I mean, I, you can, you're going to have to borrow a general fund money or something to make it fly.
Yeah, I mean, you guys are pretty conservative with what you ask because your, your tax levy, even with the small increases, only going to collect one million, four hundred thirty-four thousand, which is slightly less than your estimated expense in that fund. So.
Do you have any other fire levies or just that? Are there any other ones?
So it's a levy with an increase with an increase.
They're all, you had, so remember one time, those were separated levies, is that right?
I don't think so. I know the last time we came, we kept it as an additional as well.
Okay.
Just as a policy of what we want to do.
Okay. Yeah.
They're separate line items.
Yeah.
Tax for
Because of the increase.
Because of the increase.
First one qualified.
I think the first two.
First two. And then the rest are not. That's why we have to separate the line items because we don't get roll back.
And they were passed. The increments were passed the different years.
Okay. Yeah, I tried to look at those sheets and it's like, what, what are we talking about? How many different numbers? Who's?
Chris's turn.
Second, yes. Nice seeing all of you. Thank you.
You've got her taken care of.
I think I gotta give you a certificate. Don't leave yet. I gotta chase you down.
I think you'll
If you have any folks that suffered from damage to their property, we'll give you a form for the storm. They can apply for property tax relief for one year on a percentage of fifty percent. It has to be structural. If you want to give them, that's also on our website, but if you got any complaints, a tree fell on my house, they simply fill that out. They get an automatic fifty percent reduction on the structural value. It expires at one year. If they have more than one year of damage, it comes to the VR. Okay, so here's your certificate for your temporary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
See you.
Take care.
You have to describe it in photographs and then we check. Okay, we actually
Send someone out.
Just to make sure it's actually built house. Okay, we're going to open the hearing for Burton Village. It is nine forty. Kristen, when you get a minute, if you could start with the numbers.
Burton Village submitted their twenty twenty-five tax budget showing a beginning cash balance in their general fund of four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty-three cents. They requested revenue in the amount of one million, seventy-nine thousand, six ninety-nine. Revenue for consideration will be one million, seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars. Estimated expenses, one million, four hundred and thirteen thousand, eight sixty-five, leaving an ending cash balance of a hundred and sixty-five thousand, five sixty and twenty-three cents. Fire fund has a beginning cash balance of forty-three thousand, two twenty-six, sixty-nine. Requested revenue in the amount of a hundred and fifty-one thousand, two twenty-seven. Revenue for consideration will be a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two twenty-seven. Estimated expenses are at a hundred and ninety-four thousand, leaving a negative cash, ending cash balance of twenty-two thousand, five forty-six, thirty-one. Police fund has a beginning cash balance of a hundred and fifteen thousand, six forty-nine, forty-nine. They requested revenue in the amount of four hundred and seventy-six thousand, eight ninety-five, which would be considered. Estimated expenses, five hundred and fifty-three thousand, four fifty, leaving an ending cash balance of thirty-nine thousand, ninety-four dollars and forty-nine cents. The road improvement fund has a beginning cash balance of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, five ninety-six, forty-eight. They requested revenue in the amount of ninety-eight thousand, seventy-three dollars, which would be considered. Estimated expense, two hundred and thirty-five thousand, leaving an ending cash balance of six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents. Total millage for taxure twenty-four, twenty-five. Three mil inside general, four point seven outside fire, two outside police, three outside road improvement for a total of twelve point seven five. They do have one levy on the ballot for November, which is a renewal of a two point two five fire and EMS.
Sure. Our point, I mean, I have very little, well-done budget. The, you only have, your general fund only shows eleven and a half percent carryover, but I'm assuming you're using income tax and you're going to transfer it. The negative account, you may want to throttle your expenses until, because our revenue, we have a difference in revenue. So that's going to drive you negative. You obviously don't want to be negative, but either replace that with either more revenue from income tax transfer or reduce expenditures to have a zero-based balance for your own budget. But I mean, well done. No issues. Yeah, I'm good.
If you look at your road improvement fund, you're saying you can have a cash balance. We, we know that's not a fact.
Right. So we have some big projects. I was trying to get as much out of it as we could. So we have some big projects for next year, some two roads that are
Pretty bad.
Yeah, disrepair. So
Major repair.
We're not sure how much it's going to cost. Obviously, if we can do it, we will. But I wanted to try to have as much money available to us that we can use if possible.
Well, you're clearly spending it all. Do you pay your people out of your road improvement fund?
No, no, this is strictly for road improvements.
Real expenses?
Yes.
Okay, we have people.
And we have other funds too. We have a capital improvement plan, a capital improvement fund that we use also for, this is just the levy. So we have other funds that we pay for our road improvements as well.
Okay, well done.
What, what's your revenue, estimated revenue for your income tax fund for twenty twenty-five?
For our village income tax, we, we usually get around a million.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I was worried about your low balances, but obviously with the million bucks.
Does yours get dumped into the general fund? It does. So, but it's an indirect, it's not a direct.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, um.
I think it's my turn, right?
It is, so moved.
I'll second.
Yes.
Yes. Um, here's a, an application for anybody who had property damage from storms.
Okay.
Um, they can also get it on our website, but it has to have been structural. And they get a one-year reprieve, fifty percent of the value of the structure that was damaged. Um, you're free to offer that.
The home or is this like garages?
Yeah, or any improvement.
Okay.
Anything that's any tax.
Any taxable improvement.
Okay.
So it can't be like a fence, can't be just a trees down.
Or the shed somebody snuck up without a building permit.
Well, that's gonna be a problem. If there's no value on the tax base, we can't discount it.
Okay.
So if they go on their tax base and look and see if it's value, that's the percentage that we look at.
And when is the deadline?
Apply December thirty-first, and the date they put on there is the date of the storm.
Okay.
That's gonna determine what percentage they get, so tell them if they apply in December, don't put December first, because you're only gonna get in the last quarter. They're entitled to a half, which is fifty percent, so um.
Thank you.
Yeah, and if, if it's more than one year, they have to come to the V R.
Okay.
Your certificate?
Thank you so much.
Take care, have a great day.
Later.
This is your reservation needs to be cast.
Okay, next, hey, how you doing?
Okay, very good, thank you so much.
Next up is Burton Library. Okay, we're gonna open the hearing.
Best library around.
Definitely.
We're the best library on the planet, we're gonna open it.
Yes, we like that, we like hearing that.
Cause we are.
Who started by my great, great, great grandpa.
As was the fair.
Yeah.
Is there anything in your family you didn't start other than trouble?
That's what Chris is for.
That's her note, that's what her note is for.
I'm setting the record.
There you go. Okay, Kristen, can you start with the numbers, please?
Sure. Burton Public Library submitted their twenty twenty-five uh, budget with beginning cash balance in their general fund of five hundred and ten thousand one hundred and eight dollars and ninety-five cents. They requested revenue in the amount of one million sixty-one thousand four hundred and eighteen. The revenue for consideration will be one million eighty-nine thousand nine hundred forty-nine dollars, showing expenses of one million one hundred sixty-two thousand twenty-six dollars and thirty-nine cents, leaving an ending cash balance of four hundred and thirty-eight thousand thirty-one dollars and fifty-six cents. They have total mileage for tax year twenty-four twenty-five of one point seven outside general fund, which is part of uh, Brookshire Local School District's um, revenue certificate, rate resolutions certificate.
Okay, um, real quick, can you call the department?
Kristen, I already signed the sheet.
Yeah, I I I guess I get the picture. Well, my, my comments aren't very much different, I mean. I gave an award last year to Ed Worsow, cause he was kind of thrust into the, right?
Yes.
And I gave him, I think I called most improved, right? Most improved quickly. So Ed was real quick to do an iteration and clean his budget, and so I I would, if, if there was a another award I could give, I would give it to you for stepping in and just kind of, the budget was clean as can be. I mean, I have no complaints.
And one of the best budgets.
It was very easy, no problems, no issues. Congratulations, you did a great job.
Marie stepped up.
Yeah.
You have to sign it, don't you?
I will sign it as soon as we make the motion and pass.
Well, you're putting it in the basket.
No, this is their budget.
Keep going.
Oh, this is the other one. I did that last year too, if I remember right.
Maybe try.
Power to find it.
Sure motion.
I'll sum it.
Second?
Yes.
Yes. Here is your certificate.
Thank you.
That's from your temporaries, don't use it before then, and we're off to the races.
Well, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, have a good day.
Congratulations, you don't know what some of the others have been like.
You don't know what some of the others have been like is right. Okay, West G Rec.
Good morning.
Good morning, how are you?
Is this going faster than?
Ed, it's been.
Today.
Today is much better than yesterday, really, yeah. It's more like it is now than it was before.
Good.
Figure that one out. Okay, we're gonna open the hearing for the West G Rec District. Um, Kristen, could you do the numbers, please?
Sure, West G Rec um, submitted their twenty twenty-five tax budget with a beginning balance in their general fund of twenty-one thousand one hundred and twenty-three dollars sixteen cents. Requested revenue in the amount of eighty-nine thousand two eighty-nine. The revenue for consideration will be eighty-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine. Estimated expenses, ninety-seven thousand, leaving an ending cash balance of fourteen thousand sixty-two dollars and sixteen cents. Uh, total mileage for twenty-four twenty-five is point two outside general fund.
I'll go first. Any budget that I can read in one paper, I'm okay with. Ed, Ed, as always, you do a, a lot of work with very little money benefiting a bunch of people. I mean, you're like, you're what everybody hopes government would do.
Yeah, thank you.
So I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Go ahead, top that one, Chris.
Chris, everything.
I'm sorry that Mr. Walters did not find that your work is of exceptional quality. Just quality.
Thank you.
Nobody does more with less.
Nope.
Do a great job.
Thank you.
Yep.
Chris.
So moved.
Second, yes.
Yes.
Thank you for coming in.
Thanks.
The only reason we have you come in is.
Just to get you to say hello.
Yeah.
Yeah, congratulations.
That's a good thing.
It is a good thing though. You don't want to come in for the wrong reasons.
Yeah.
Get rid of these Sherrod Brown signs.
Sherrod Brown signs, Sherrod, Sherrod. Somebody called him Sherrod. Here's your certificate for your temporaries for next year.
Thank you.
Um, thank you so much.
Yeah, good luck with the fall season.
Thank you. Everything's looking good?
Good to see you all.
Outstanding.
Take care.
In and out.
You set a great example.
Yep, thank you, keep doing it. Boy, you're gonna wear your arm out lifting this. Hello.
Hi, how are you? Good morning.
Hello.
Hello.
Hello, Mayor.
How are you?
Good. We're gonna open the hearing for Middlefield Village.
Can I get initial sound?
As soon as Kristen's.
Anywhere?
Yep.
Okay, she will start with the numbers. Oops.
Just need one.
Oh.
That's it?
Thank you.
That's mine.
Thanks.
While, while we're waiting for your numbers, if you have anybody who suffered property damage from a storm, they can apply for um, structural, any kind of structure in a home, apply for tax relief.
Okay, I will bring this to the village.
And if you could put it on your website if you want, you can put it's ours, whatever you want.
Okay.
I'll still post it somewhere. Yeah, yeah, we've been pushing it out. I mean, there's been a lot of damage, so trying to help out as much.
Yeah, we got lucky in the village, I mean, we really.
Yeah.
Did not.
It did like a split.
It did.
On the outside of everybody.
It did, we just.
Every direction. Chester got me.
Four directions from us. Yeah, that's what I got, pummels.
Okay, Kristen, you're up.
Okay, Middlefield Village submitted their twenty twenty-five tax budget with a beginning cash balance in their general fund, one million ninety-nine thousand one hundred and forty dollars and ninety-seven cents. They requested revenue in the amount of one million nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand six twenty-five. The revenue for consideration will be two million one hundred and fourteen thousand eighty-two dollars and fifty cents. Estimated expenses, two million four hundred and thirty-six thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars and sixty-nine cents, leaving an ending cash balance of seven hundred and seventy-six thousand fifty-one and seventy-eight cents. The police fund has a beginning cash balance of sixty-nine thousand four oh nine and seven cents. They requested revenue in the amount of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. The revenue for consideration will be a hundred and ninety-four thousand eight seventy. Estimated expenses are, did I already say for consideration? Um, will be considered. Um, expenses are at a hundred and eighty-four thousand six twenty-four seventy-five. Cash back, ending cash balance is seventy-nine thousand six fifty-four thirty-two. The ambulance fund has a beginning cash balance of two hundred and forty-two thousand sixty-four dollars and fifty-nine cents. Um, they passed an ordinance to suppress a levy, therefore they requested no money. Expenses are showing estimated at seventy-seven thousand five hundred and sixty dollars, leaving an ending cash balance of a hundred and sixty-four thousand five oh four and fifty-nine cents. Total mileage for tax year twenty-four twenty-five, three point, or three mil inside general fund, and then two mil outside police for a total of five mils. They do have a police levy on the ballot for a renewal of two mils.
I'm gonna go first before you pick up and sign.
No. Very good budget. What you're supposed to be doing, a really good example, and a sea change from what was the past. It's lovely to see. I'm glad you spoke first.
Don't just take my thunder.
Well, in general, there is another side to this.
Yeah. So, I guess there's, you know, you have a very healthy budget, which we, we're all very grateful, actually, the county's been very fortunate. Somebody's dog is. The advantage you have obviously is in the form of income tax, and that is funding many, many initiatives which are very valuable. And that keeps property taxes lower. And I, what I'm most appreciative of is you're not only preemptively elected to suppress a levy, but your plans are to do that two years out, um, to some degree, and I understand that's not a sure thing until you do it, but to me, that shows forward thinking, it shows consideration for taxpayers. And if you, as I ran through all of your, I I look for trends and I look for percentage carryover. And the negatives are all downward trends, and your higher cash balances are on a negative trend, which is good, right? Cause you're squeezing money out because you're giving it back to the taxpayer. So, a-again, you're healthy, that's good, you don't want to go unhealthy, but you don't want to have excess cash that you don't need. You're doing the right things, so I can't be more proud of you representing Jogga County in that manner. More residents saw county, county governments and local governments preemptively making, taking action. I think they were confident in government's behavior.
It's their money.
It's theirs, yeah. So, I mean, you're, you're, you're doing great work, keep doing it. So I, I will make a motion to approve.
Second?
Yes, uh, and I'm not gonna speak for Jim Boyce, but in fact, he left, he did.
He didn't run out holding his mouth.
Yeah, yeah. So here is your certificate for our temporaries. Thanks for coming in, appreciate it.
I have a quick question, where are we on real estate tax?
Well, that's a good question. So I um, spoke to the uh, the joint commission of the House and the Senate um, three months ago now. Um, at the request of Senator O'Brien. Um, five, four other auditors spoke as well with different tax, we went after this in nine different ways. Um, my understanding is Senator O'Brien proposed my solution to the House and the Senate. Um, but now it's in, it's gonna go into committee, and then it'll go into debate, and you know what that means, that maybe. The further you go up the food chain, the slower the work.
So if it succeeds, what's proposed?
Um, I am proposing a change to specifically to try to throttle some of the floor adjustment values for schools. Um, schools have a, there, there's a couple of schools that are at the floor that are getting huge boosts, unvoted, unvoted tax. And my suggestion was to include in that calculation emergency levies, um, certain other levies which were excluded before, to give people a true value of what the village did, what village they were funding your schools with. Because when you start taking out mils, you artificially change the number, and then what the taxpayers see when they vote for something, they may not realize, isn't counted in, in the floor. So emergencies are the biggest flaws, in my opinion. You can have a hundred mils of emergencies, and you technically have zero mils for the floor calculation. Which, is that true? Isn't it all money? So that's, that was my pitch. Um, they seemed to bite on that because it was, they could grab it and move with it. You know, I think the harder you make it for them to understand, the less chance they're gonna fix it. It's not a solution. The solution is the whole way we do property tax is screwed up, of course, but I, that's way above my pay grade.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, so I guess what I'm telling you is don't hold your breath.
Yeah.
I think we're gonna do more than.
Well, we're, we're giving you some relief.
You're getting relief through what you're doing.
I said, we're giving relief to a couple of police levy. So maybe come a time, you can't give that.
Yes, right.
All right.
Appreciate it. Thanks for coming in. You're sticking around.
Yeah, East Yaga.
Yeah.
You wanna stay at East Yaga?
You can't wait.
Oh, yeah, sure. Hope it goes as smooth as the first one.
Okay, we're gonna open the hearing for the East Yaga Fire District. Uh, Kristen, can you start with the numbers, please?
Sure. East Yaga Fire District submitted their twenty twenty-five tax budget with a beginning cash balance in the general fund of four hundred and fifteen thousand four fifty-nine ninety-five, requesting revenue in the amount of one million sixty-seven thousand one sixty-six. The revenue for consideration will be one million one hundred thousand five hundred and ninety dollars. The estimated expenses will, are showing at one million ninety thousand nine hundred, leaving an ending cash balance of four hundred and twenty-five thousand one hundred and forty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents. Total mileage for tax year twenty-four twenty-five is two levies totaling for fire for five point seven.
Wanna go again first, Chris, because you took it last time?
No, I want to get a better understanding of just what constitutes the fire district, cause I understand it's a geographic area.
Yes.
Middlefield Village, Middlefield Township is the technical fire district. Then they, the fire department, independently of the district, bills Huntsburg Township for services separately. So it's, it's a, it's a contract between Volunteer Middlefield Fire Department and Huntsburg Township.
Who owns the equipment?
The fire, well, the fire department itself. They, we sub out the entire function to them, so they own the equipment.
When you say the fire department, that would be the East Yaga Fire District?
That would be the Middlefield Volunteer Fire Department. We sub services to them, and then pay them a contract fee.
The district pays them.
Yeah, the district pays them a contract.
Can you, who audits the Middlefield Village Fire Department?
So they have an independent accounting firm that, that does audits. We also, at any given point, I have access to their books whenever I want.
Does the state audit them?
Uh, no, it's a private audit.
Like, if they're small enough, they don't require the state audit.
They're not a public.
And they're not a public entity, yeah.
But they're funded by taxpayers.
Indirectly.
Yeah.
And one hundred percent.
That's a, that's a, it's a.
Same thing as monthly. Mostly, yes, they do do their own, like the way you're saying, you know, promotions and contributions and donations, but yes, predominantly, most of it is funded by the taxpayers. Through us subcontracting the service from them.
They're the, they're the arm tying it to the taxpayer, right?
The district, which is nice, because we can kind of control the money that's coming in from the taxpayer.
So you don't control the expenses, though?
No. No, but if they're not, just like a private company, if they're not intelligent with their spending, they're gonna put themselves in a real constraint, because the money coming in is the money coming in, and they have to live within that budget. But you are correct, we don't have control over their spending. But I will tell you, the nice thing is, at this point, the relationship, I literally have access to their accounting.
That, that I think is the unique difference between your district and some other private companies in dealing with public entities. Not everyone has a view into their work.
Yeah, we have a very good relationship.
I was a very, I would be much more apprehensive if you didn't have.
Yeah, of course.
For a lot of reasons, not, not that there's any.
There was a time we did.
Yeah.
Well, those are all public records, so.
Yeah, they are, but that doesn't mean they offer it.
No, but upon request, they do have to turn them over.
Yeah.
But we have a great relationship, and we are able to, at any point, you know, negotiate things, look through um, their accounting. Literally, I could pop up right now and pull it out.
Who's turning?
Should I go again?
Go ahead.
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
Good job. These, these are going much smoother today. Chris, you must have had a good night's sleep.
Yeah.
Maybe you didn't have a good night's sleep.
He was crabby, yes.
Oh, he was crabby, oh, hackle.
Thank you.
Just for your temporaries, thanks again.
Yeah, thank you.
Good seeing you as always.
Nice to meet you.
Have a good one.
Take care.
You too.
Next up is South Russell Village. Mr. Mayor, Danielle, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good? Kristen, you wanna start with the numbers?
Sure. South Russell Village submitted their twenty twenty-five tax budget with a beginning cash balance in the general fund of three hundred and fifty-three thousand and four dollars. They're requesting revenue in the amount of one million two hundred and sixty-four thousand one hundred and twenty dollars. Revenue for consideration will be one million two hundred and fifty-eight thousand four twenty-six. Uh, estimated expenses are at one million four hundred ninety-eight thousand one hundred and forty dollars, leaving an ending. Estimated expenses are at $1,498,140, leaving an ending cash balance of $113,290. Their beginning cash balance in our police and safety fund is $218,225. They requested revenue in the amount of $1,924,165, which will be considered. Estimated expenses are at $2,023,133, leaving an ending cash balance of $119,257. Operating fund has a beginning cash balance of $219,429. They requested revenue in the amount of $353,406, which will be considered. Estimated expenses are at $473,485, leaving an ending cash balance of $95,350. The road and bridge levy has a beginning cash balance of $9,174. They requested revenue in the amount of $243,406, which will be considered. Estimated expenses are at $50,000, leaving an ending cash balance of $202,580. They do have a reserve fund. Their total mileage for tax year 2425 is three mil inside general fund, 4.2 outside operating, 4.75 outside police, 1.5 outside road and bridge for a total of 13.45. And they do have a renewal levy for police on the ballot in November for 2.75 mils.
The, um, what, what is your revenue, income tax revenue each year?
Right now, one point. We're, um, after expenses was like 1.6, revenues have been increased the last couple of years. We think that's because more people are working from home, so we get those revenues now. But now people are starting to go back to work and then the state, um, once again, is trying to make a grab, take control of that. So we're watching that closely.
Yeah, because, um, I mean, some of your cash balances are actually kind of low, which was an opposite problem than you have had in the past. And so, but again, with municipality, I know you're always supplementing. Like your police department, I mean, you don't bring in enough levy money to operate your police department, but you've always supplemented that with income tax, so.
That's why we're different than the township, because we get our money from our income tax and then disperse it among the funds. And the last few years, we've done a lot of stormwater projects. And then next year will be the salt dome and then Bell Road East.
Yeah, so that was the other thing I was going to ask with Bell Road East. So you only have to show an estimated expense of $50,000 from the road and bridge levy. So what, yeah, so you're taking the gas money, the gas tax money?
Well, it'll come out of the special road fund and we do have a grant for that. So that $50,000, um, there's a loan attached to that funding. That's why we didn't get, that's why we closed that reserve fund. I remember we had a reserve fund for Bell. And we got the.
OPWC, is that what you got?
OPWC and NOACCA money.
So, oh, good. So what did, what do you get? What did you get from NOACCA? Do you know?
Little over a million.
Well, that's good. What's the project cost of that? A couple million bucks?
About $1.6.
That was with, you know, prices from four years ago.
Do you have to go throw it out again, like we did for Bell Road West or?
We hopefully not.
I hope so too. You guys always do a much better job managing the project. Yourselves. Okay. Yeah, I mean, the only thing I would warn you about, I mean, you do have the low cash balances. Again, you've got the income tax fund, but 1.6 million, when you start spreading it out among all those funds, it's not like, you know, the city charter came in here, they got like seven million bucks. You know, that's a lot more to, to spread out. You don't have as big of a cushion, I think. So that would be my only comment. But as always, you do an excellent job with your budgets, so.
Um, my comments are similar. Um, your cash carryovers are very modest. 8% in the general fund, your safety fund is 6%, operating fund is 21%. Special service, 6%, capital project, 17%. The only exception is the road and bridge fund, which has a fairly high, but I'm sure, I mean, those are project driven.
Right.
How do you calculate carryover? There's no. It's, it's totally different. Your reserve fund is exclusively for what purpose?
The road and bridge, I'm sorry, with the large equipment fund is for trucks and the service firm, big trucks and big equipment.
So you can use road and bridge money if you had to, to supplement that, correct? Is that permissive? Is that, what's going into your road and bridge fund? Is that levy money or is it?
Levy money.
Okay. So you have to use it for construction?
Correct.
Got it. Okay. I have nothing further.
Danielle, the only concern I have are these low fund balances in the general fund. Even though you have transfers in and out, uh, and also police and safety. You know, your budget is close to ideal. If there is a way to increase those, uh, end of year balances to closer to 20%, it would be a perfect budget.
Okay.
Okay.
And you can just, I mean, you've got the money, you just, you don't show the transfers, that's all.
Right.
Who's moving?
Uh, mine. You did the last one. Um, also move.
Second?
Yes.
Yes. Good job.
I have a question.
Wow.
Well, they submitted the budget with showing the mitigation, correct?
Right.
And it, and they passed a resolution for the mitigation.
Oh, very good.
Wow.
So, um, what rate resolution would you prefer that they have?
Uh, do the one that would confirm what they, what they asked.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you for doing that, by the way. And if you have any residents who experienced storm damage, um, and the event we had a couple of weeks ago, they can file a, basically request to reduce valuation.
It's a percentage. A tree hit your house or a tree hit your shed or outbuilding.
I mean, it's very little. It's, we did too, fortunately, but north of us and south of us, they both got hit, right? So if, if it's structural and if, if it's something that's on their tax bill, so if it's, if it's an approved, uh, an improvement on their tax bill, we give them a 50% reduction for, for one year. If it's more than a one-year damage cycle, they can't get it repaired in time. They have to come before the BOR. So we're making those forms more available to people. They've always been on our website, but with the storm, we thought we'd better pop them to the top of the stack. So if you have anybody complains, say, fill it out. It may involve flooding too. It, it may be able to be construed as flooding. We'd have to do an investigation, but. If, if it was due to that, that downpour that we had, there's a very good chance they could argue it. Okay. So let me give you this, Danielle.
So I walked out in the yard and my shoes got wet.
Yeah, well, that's due to ignorance, not, not.
You can walk by water.
Till they sink.
Yeah. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you.
Take care.
You all. Have a good one. Next up is Jaga Park District. Okay, we're going to open the hearing. It's 10:12 AM, August 20th, 2024, for the Jaga Park District. Annual budget hearing for their budget. Um, Kristen, when you get a chance, could you first go through the numbers?
Sure. Jaga County Park District submitted their 2025 budget with a beginning cash balance in the general fund of $3,366,522.32. They're requesting revenue in the amount of $7,158,503, which would be considered. Estimated expenses are at $7,364,511. Ending cash balance, $3,168,514.32. The, um, Park Board Land Improvement Fund has a beginning cash balance of $1,932,134.20. Requested revenue in the amount of $200,000, which would be considered. Estimated expenses are at $1,005,000. Ending cash balance is $1,127,134.20. For total mileage for tax year 2425 is three levies totaling 2.6.
Want to go first? Sure. Um, the only, uh, I, I looked at some anticipated cash carryovers for a variety of year periods you submitted. 2024, you're anticipating about a 70% of carryover going into '25 and then '25 going into '26. Yours is 60% carryover. So it's on a decline, which, which is good. You know, optimal sweet spot is usually a one quarter. But, you know, I mean, you're, you're approaching the number you need to weigh. The only other thing, you, you submitted a ton of data, which I appreciate. I do actually read that data. Uh, I believe in the minutes, however, in your submission 5A, I'm not sure who said it, but it was stated that the county auditor sets property valuations and distributes taxes. And also collects taxes. The treasurer collects the taxes. The auditor sets the value. So just, just so the public doesn't start yelling at the wrong person.
Okay.
Which they're going to do. Um, just so the record is clear. Um, that's all I got. Jim, it's up to you.
Yeah, I mean, the cash balances, I mean, obviously there was a course correction that we made, which I think resolved when they were, you know, getting up over $5 million. You know, you're, you're getting, you're maybe approaching four again. I mean, you've, you've estimated them to go down. We'll see if that actually happens, but, um, I think there, again, I think if you start approaching that $5 million mark, that's where, where you're going to get into some headaches with us. But, uh, other than that, I thought it was a good budget. I think you did a good job.
Thank you.
There was a couple of rough budgeting periods there, so I think you've come in and done a good job with that.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Chris? Uh, I'll only say, this is the second year in a row. I didn't have a single caution or highlight for the budget. In 14 years. It has not been an easy journey, but it's a very good journey and you're in a much better position. Nicely done.
Thank you.
Keep it going.
Yeah, I think that the, if you look at this second sheet that we have, I, I think.
Thank you.
The line that we kind of look at, and we all look at it a little differently. Some of us look at the, your estimated ending balance versus your actual ending balance. And when you look at those, you can see you're like this, right? Now that, that's an indicator, but it's not a totality of indicators. More importantly, I think if you look at your estimated expenses versus actual expenses, I don't know that you could get any better. And when you're looking at in years past, you were a million dollars off the park. But in 2023, you're within a half a million dollars on a seven and a half million dollar budget. That, when you're, when you're within 10% of, of a budget, that's a sweet spot. I mean, if you can stay anywhere close to that, you're like home running it every year. So that's what I would, you know, have you pay attention to.
Okay.
Predict accurate expenses and then perform to those expenses. Because that really, that's what you're telling the taxpayers you're going to do and that's what you end up doing. We all get that years come and go where things don't happen the way we plan them. But overall, you've really brought that number to, I think, the optimal. You're, you're predicting very well, which is a good sign of budgeting.
Thank you.
It's your turn.
My turn to Chris.
Chris.
Second, yes.
Based on this budget, I don't think you need to read the council.
Okay.
Our compliments to your staff, Kristen, Tammy.
Yeah.
Good sense. Thanks. So here is your certificate for the temporaries. Don't use it before the temporaries or you'll get yourself in trouble with the auditor state. I think we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
They're on their way. They're on their way. Hello.
Hello.
How are you?
Okay.
Good seeing you.
Yeah, good seeing you.
Good. You can't make him sit by himself.
Yeah.
Poor guy's going to need a boat.
I'm ready to play in the truck for all the bullets.
Welcome to our world. Are you part of Warren's?
Am I part of Warren's? Yeah, I'm a, I'm a human. The building is, uh, stands well. My name is Wes and I work over there.
So I had dinner there the other night.
Did you?
Holy cow. It was so good.
Oh, yeah.
Scary.
Thanks for having me.
No. What?
Oh, yeah, it's very good.
I had scallops and shrimp and curry sauce. It's like, I thought I was down.
Sometimes you have to drive east.
I go out and see family out there at the cemetery.
Do they start the cemetery?
We're, we're going to open the, if you guys are done talking about food, we're going to open the budget hearings. Is that okay?
That sounds good.
For Aquila Village.
If you're lucky, we'll invite you there.
You don't invite me anywhere else. Um, it is 10:20 AM on August 20th, 2024. This is the budget hearing for Aquila Village. Um, Kristen, would you start with the numbers, please?
Sure. Aquila Village submitted their 2025 tax budget with a beginning cash balance in the general fund of $81,339.83. They requested revenue in the amount of $48,950. Revenue for consideration will be $58,528.77. Estimated expenses are at $45,930, leaving an ending cash balance of $93,938.60. The road levy fund has a beginning cash balance of $3,809.7. They requested revenue in the amount of $10,507. The budget commission will not consider any revenue. Uh, the estimated expenses are at $10,700, leaving an ending cash balance of a negative $6,890.93. The fire and EMS levy had a beginning cash balance of $1,734.31. They requested revenue in the amount of $25,700. The budget commission will not be considering any revenue. The estimated expenses are at $27,400, leaving a negative cash, ending cash balance of $25,665.69. They are not indicating that they're going to be collecting any money in their street lighting assessment fund. Total mileage for tax year 2425 is three mils inside general fund, 7.53 outside general, for a total of 10.53. The cause for the negative balance for the revenue request is the fact that these levies are not on the ballot nor are they eligible to have money.
Okay, Ms. First?
You know, obviously, um, you're in a dire situation. I, you know, there's not of your own making. So, I mean, I know that you'll have negative balances. You couldn't, you can make up for those for maybe a year or two with the general fund, but then you're going to be, um, you know, if the issue doesn't pass and the, and the village goes on, I, I think you're probably a year and a half or two years away from bankruptcy. So I, um, I think I said it before when a reporter called me, but, uh, I commend you for being forward thinking. You didn't, you didn't have easy decisions to make. But I think that by putting that issue on the ballot, you're, you're making the right decision for your taxpayers. Because they're going to see, you know, a, a pretty significant reduction in their tax, you know? So. Takes, uh, I mean, we, we've had a couple of park, you know, small. One in particular, we've, we've had some people come in and they're basically a bureaucracy that just exists. And, uh, they're really not doing anything. I think you guys have always done a lot with a little. But just with the, the economy and everything and the cost of things, it's just not sustainable. And instead of being on the, on the outside of that and on the wrong side of that, you, you got ahead of it, which, um, is rare in government. So I commend, commend all of you for that. I appreciate all your help. You know, it seems like the right thing to do. You know, now it's just, uh, without raising our taxes real high. Trying to accommodate, you know, this is going to be a good working relationship with Clardon. I've been a couple of trusty. Jonathan. What we're trying to do is, uh, hopefully, if the passes on the ballot in November and, uh, from the way we've been talking with the residents and everything, I've heard they're all about it, especially because of the reduction in our real estate classes. It just seems like, you know, what, what I'm, what we're trying to do right now is just get through the year, which we have money to get through. Just trying to, uh, see what happens November 5th. You know, unfortunately, we're in, you know, we don't know. You know, I mean, if they voted down, then okay, you know, good. 2025 is going to be, you know, pretty great. But, uh, if it passes, then, uh, it just seems like what we're trying to do is just go into Clardon on a positive note instead of, you know, okay, you have to take over Aquila Village. Here's no money. You know, and I, we are going to have.
Here's no money, you know, and I, we are gonna have money left. You know, depending on when the paperwork goes through as far as, you know, if it does pass to dissolve. And then, you know, state gets involved. You know, I mean, I think, you know, we've talked about it a little bit. It's not gonna be November sixth. You know, it might not even be the first of the year.
I think it will be.
It'll be quick.
Yeah. After the, once the election results are certified, this, unfortunately, they changed the statute, so you're the first ones.
Yeah. In the county, of course.
No, in the state, I believe. I mean, they've just amended the statute.
Oh, okay.
April thirtieth, it took effect, and it can only be in a general election. So I don't know if there's other ones on the ballot this November, but you have to be.
You'll be one of the.
One of the first.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, because under the new law, the soon as somebody can do this would have been this November.
Yeah.
I, you might be the, the first ones and the only ones, but you're certainly the first ones.
Yeah, definitely in Georgia.
No, no, in the state.
Well, I mean.
Oh, yeah, for sure, Georgia, yeah. So.
I mean, yeah.
So once the res- election results are certified, then this commission's formed. This will be the county auditor, the county recorder, and a, a county commissioner.
Okay.
And then that commission, um, will work with, with you folks and Clardon folks, they're supposed to, and I'm sure you will.
Right, yeah.
With kind of winding everything down and so really the, the, the village would cease to exist upon certification of those election results. So that would occur probably at the end of November or beginning of December.
Oh, okay.
Um, and then this transition period would occur and, and the thought would be to try to do the transition so you have a clean break on January first. Uh, but, but the village would cease to exist upon certification of the election results. That's the way the statute reads.
Yeah, I, I think what I'm most, the le- you know, you try to look at every thing that happens, where the lessons lie, you know? And in this case, um, you know, you, you actually demonstrated an incredible amount of fortitude. You, you let your personal opinions go away and you, and I believe you, you acted on your conscience and what you thought was best for everyone. People don't often do that when they're faced with those kind of decisions. Oftentimes, their personal opinion is what drives them to the ultimate objective. So I, I very much appreciate, and we've had a lot of conversations.
Yes.
Some were emotional, which they should be.
Well, yeah.
I've been there a long time. You've been.
The village has been there a long time. I've been there a long time.
I, I watched you go full circle.
Right.
With the debate about this. I, I've watched it and it, it was, um, a good experience for me to go through. Um, it, it doubled down my, um, my belief that I need to help you and not just sit back and watch. So, you know, whatever we need to do going forward, I'm committed to do, to help you.
I appreciate it.
I think everyone in council as well as you deserves credit for uh, doing what government often doesn't do, and that is to do the right thing. So, um, you, you should enjoy at least that component of it. Um, I think you never know what's in store for you going forward, but um, I think it will only be good things based on what you've demonstrated. You know, it, it is a good indicator that whatever you do in the future is how you behaved in the past.
Yeah, and I mean, uh, it's just, uh, you know, the unfortunate part is we have to wait till November.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, you know, that's, you know.
It's like, yeah, it's like waiting for the governor to call.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, but we'll get, we'll get through this, you know?
Okay.
Your submission was obviously very awkward from us, from our standpoint, because how do you judge a future budget that
Right.
may not even be necessary?
Exactly.
But you have to go through the process. And so we, we were gonna give you a certificate for next year, which we may use, may not use.
Right.
But we deal with it and feel free, if any of you have, you know, angst or worry, reach out to us and we're, we're here to help you. We don't want to make this harder for you because we, we know it's not fun to begin with, so.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Yes.
All right. All right, there's your certificate. If you had anybody who suffered storm damage um, during the last event, they can apply for a one-year tax relief.
Oh, there you go.
Fifty percent. Um, it's gotta be material. It's gotta be something that's structural on their property, something that was taxed. So if a tree just falls down, a tree is not taxed.
Yeah.
The tree falls on the house and the house was damaged, the house is taxed.
How about it, uh, ripped the power out of the house?
Well, there's an argument to be made. If the house is not livable, if the house floods for some condition, it, you know, we have to investigate and there's a set of rules we have to follow, but.
This damaged the house.
I, I would argue that it, it in effect damaged the home.
Because I mean, uh, we did have one big tree go down.
Yeah.
And it took out the power. And when it went down, it pulled the service out of two houses.
Yeah, I, I, I think the power going down in itself is not an event that damaged the structure.
Right.
Turn down the lines, however, is a component that's connected to the.
Because they ripped them right off the house.
I, I think we would have to investigate, but we, we're trying to help as many people as we can, so have them, it, it's, I need a couple of those.
Yeah.
You can also go to our website and get it. Have them apply if in doubt. We want to help people. Um, it's a one-year only abatement, but it's a significant amount and it'll get them through this period. That's our objective.
We really lucked out with that storm, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
It knocked out, it knocked out.
Not in Chester.
Half the village.
Yeah, right.
Because our power, half of, yeah, yeah, Cornelia and Brookshire come from Mayfield Road and Gordon and Turner come from Charton, and the tree was obviously on Cornelia. And it took it down, blocked the road, and it didn't catch on fire or anything like that, but it just, you know, we closed the road. And then, um, then they came and fixed it, but that was the only two houses. No, nobody's house got hit by trees.
Yeah.
Uh, another big limb come down on Boring, and actually the neighbors cut it up, got it off the road. So the road was open, no wires down. But now the village pretty much lucked out on that because there was a lot of people, you know, Chester.
Yeah, Chester, South, uh, Southern Bainbridge got it pretty hard.
Right.
Um, you know, there were people in Chester that were on it for over a week.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, a couple of days is one thing, but a week is a long time, but no power. So anyway, um, again, uh, I commend you on what, how you've handled this. This is.
I appreciate all the help from you and from Jim. You know, I had numerous calls and.
I always like talking to you.
Yeah, there you go. I appreciate it. You're in my phone. Sorry.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, have a good one.
Yes.
Hopefully you won't have any more, so.
Yeah, not till next year, right?
Hopefully ten years.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Take care.
Have a great day.
It was.
She wrote it, she wrote it wrong.
Oh, I'm telling you.
Okay.
That's an excellent.
You have once and you get credit. Jim and I go all the time and we never get credit.
The curry stiff that I had.
We're gonna present it tomorrow.
Yeah.
Okay, great. That's great.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you. All right, what, um, you want to do, public comment first or want to do regular business first? Do some regular business because there may be questions regarding.
Do we have any regular business?
Yes, we do. We have Auburn Township.
Yeah, can we, can we do that now?
You want to do Auburn first?
Yes, but so we're gonna move into the general.
You can have them sign that after the fact because we already know how they voted.
The general discussion area, so, um, Kristen and Tammy, I guess Kristen primarily worked last night, um, moving the numbers around in Auburn Township. Basically moving revenue out of the general fund into the road and bridge fund to support the cost associated with the mitigation of that levy. Um, they, she also reduced the expenditures that were attributed in the general fund to that mitigation since it is coming out of the road. So, um, you, can you summarize, Kristen, quickly, um, the changes made and how it affects the budget submission? Are, I'm more important, are there any negative balances? That's what I'm worried about.
No, there are no negative balances. So at, based off of yesterday's conversation, what we ended up doing is, um, this morning I came in and Auburn Township met last night and they passed a resolution to rescind the request for the shift of millage all to the general fund. So it put it back to one point four for general, one point six for road and bridge.
Okay.
So we went ahead and we did the adjustment to the revenue numbers in the general fund and road and bridge. And in addition, as the budget was submitted with four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in expenses, which was going to go towards the support of paying back the two thousand and five.
Did you say four hundred and fifty?
Seven, I'm sorry. Yeah, I meant seven fifty, seven hundred and fifty thousand. So we reduced the expenses in the general fund, left the expenses as they were in road and bridge as, um, that will be managed internally by their road projects that they take on to make sure that they have enough money after they take care of the remediation. I can read the general fund and.
Could you do that, please?
Absolutely. The, um, general fund numbers as, um,
As amended.
As amended by the budget commission, has a beginning cash balance of seventy thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents. The revenue will be seven hundred and forty-five thousand, seven sixty, showing expenses at six hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six hundred.
She's got, you got a sheet.
It's a new sheet.
She buried.
I put it on.
Uh, let me see.
Yep.
It's five hundred T for the.
It's, it's underneath the agenda. It's right under the agenda.
I'm sorry. I'll be back. May, in a minute.
Second pitch. Second, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, so the ending cash balance in the general fund will be a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, three twelve and eighty-seven cents. The road and bridge fund will have a beginning cash balance of three hundred and eleven thousand, one thirty-seven and ninety cents. The revenue that will be, um, considered will be one million, six hundred and six thousand, six oh six and seventy-six dollars. Uh, the expenses, one million, five hundred and ninety-two thousand, eight hundred, leaving an ending cash balance of three hundred and twenty-four thousand, four thirteen and ninety cents.
And then there's no change to the fire or the debt fund, correct?
Right, so their total mileage though did change, so they've got, uh, for twenty-four, twenty-five, one point four inside general, one point six inside road and bridge, four mil outside road and bridge, five point three outside fire and EMS, for a total of twelve point three.
So their total mills didn't change, but the distribution of the general fund.
Correct.
Road and bridge did. Okay. So their ending balances or their estimated cash balances are better, they're positive. And we will draw down their road and bridge and use that estimated expense of one point five, almost one point six million in order to mitigate the seven hundred and fifty thousand. So that should leave them about half of the money left to do whatever project they need.
Right, which they also in their auxiliary support funds for road and bridge, I know that the salaries are coming out of the gas fund.
Okay, so they're not in any compromised position?
No.
Okay. Um, so with that change to their budget, I will make a motion to approve this modified budget as presented with these changes as noted to their revenue and expenses in the general fund and road and bridge for, um, for their twenty twenty-five budget hearing.
Uh, I will second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, it passes. Um, could you, are, are you guys able to convey this to Dan?
Yes.
And.
We will give him his.
Yeah, he didn't help him as much as he can, screening his numbers up, because he's gonna have to go back into UAN. Like fix all of this and then.
Well, none of it's actually input in UAN. It's only in their budget cycle, so.
Oh, the, the expenses you'll have to take out. Oh, and the, you're right, it's in the budget part.
Right, so it's not impacting anything until he puts in his temporaries.
Okay, so I will give you his, um, certificate. Is that okay?
Yes.
Lost its stake, this paperclip. So I'm giving you his staple version. All of the paperclip versions are in here.
Okay, good. And we'll get his, uh, rate resolution over to him as well.
Okay, what other items do we have to cover?
That's all I have.
Okay, so, um, let's, let's reopen the hearing for Chester. If that's permitted, and revisit their budget. Do you have, did you have their sheets? You guys brought them back in?
Yes.
Okay. So I, I believe where we left it with Chester, it was, the budget was not approved. Um, because they have a very high cash balance in several funds and there was no positive indication that, um, a reserve fund would be set up to draw down some of those fund balances. Um, and so, um, I actually had a conversation with Mark, um, last night. He, I think he's had a conversation internally. Um, I think Craig is on his way.
Yes.
Um, do you want to start and maybe recap what you are proposing the budget commission considers with the budget?
Absolutely. So, so about two years ago, I, I met with yourself to talk about the reserve funds and we actually went through the process with Miller Dotson to have them come in and do all the work. Um, this just needs to be finished. So upon leaving here yesterday, I chatted with all three trustees. And I brought a draft agenda. Our next trustees meeting is for Friday, this Friday at seven AM. So I actually have the motion on the agenda for the board to direct the fiscal officer to create the, uh, funds for each of the departments. Because part of the issue for us is, is that, as was mentioned yesterday, and I, I certainly didn't weigh in, but, um, of that general fund balance, we have major projects all with our buildings that are part of that, but it's not defined. Meaning, you know, we have money to repair a roof on a road department, to repair the salt storm that's falling apart, to do a lot of things, but it's all in the general fund. And the reserve funds are gonna help define where this project money is going and would lower that general fund. Of course, we've got work to do in regards to the road department budget. We found some inconsistencies this morning from twenty-four, but as far as the reserve fund, the motion is already on the agenda. The board is prepared to consider that Friday morning and, uh, direct the fiscal officer to get those funds created and then move the funds obviously into the appropriate, uh, column. So I brought copies of that just so you can see that it was on the agenda for Friday. So that's, uh, obviously the biggest piece that I wanted to weigh in and give you some assurances that we're gonna get that done.
Can't do anything till you're, or until there's a motion ordering them to be established. So if you want, um, we could, you know, I have a whole meeting next week. Your, your meeting is, is.
It's Friday morning at seven AM.
Yeah, so we could either have a meeting on Friday. Uh, no, I won't be here. Well, I could have, I could have somebody.
We could do it Monday.
Or we could do it Monday. Then you're gone. I'm, I'm, I'm just on Thursday, Friday.
Could it be considered contingent upon the approval?
I don't know how you contingently approve. Can you contingently approve?
It's a, it's a problem.
Right.
There's no problem. It's like there's no crying in baseball.
Yes, sir.
What is your schedule, Chris, on Monday? Shouldn't be along, we, we don't have any other business, right?
Monday's fine.
It's, it's a shame that they couldn't pass the motion while they were here during their meeting.
Right.
That would have shortened it.
Dropping like flies.
So let's, let's suspend this hearing.
Since I'm the.
Don't take it personally, no. Check. Yeah, it's like, cool, okay.
Glad you're here to hold down.
Hang on a second.
Right, just keep moving.
What I think.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Sure, right now, I can.
He should be back in a second. And Jim just got a emergency call, so.
So him on the phone too, so. Is this it for the day?
This is it, yeah. Gonna push you to the end.
Still public hearing.
Yeah, we're a public, we're a public comment, but, uh.
Okay, that's exciting. Okay, very good.
Okay, we will reconvene. All right, sorry. Um, so the question is, do you have time on Monday morning or?
Yeah, Monday's fine, but it's Jimmy.
Yeah, yeah. Yep. And then Craig's a time too.
Yes.
I think it's important to hear from Craig as well because that would be an indicator. Uh, in the meantime, you want to have public comment?
Sure.
So in the meantime, this is when the dancers come out and they, you know, they, people dance and stuff.
Came at the right time?
Yeah.
All right.
So is there, is there any public comment or any questions for the public that we can try to answer? You'll have to unmute if you have said question. You better unmute. You unmute her. You can't, you'll have to unmute yourself. Your little microphones, there you go.
Yeah. Um, my only question has to do with the uh, Geogee County budget. That was not proved yesterday, is that going to be discussed today?
Um, we, we can um, when Jim gets back, but um, I guess the ones that we are reviewing today were, were people that either reached out uh, with with new information or had requested a reconsideration uh, given data changing or something of that nature. So um, like I said, Mark called me last night, I guess it was about seven or eight o'clock last night. And um, he had a proposal that, that he's bringing to the table um, with Auburn, we had discussed it during their uh, during their hearing, that we would make art the modifications internally um, based on a verbal with them. And so those are the two that we acted on. Okay, I, anything from the county?
So is, it's my understanding then that the Budget Commission has authority to make changes to the uh, Geogee County budget? And will those be done in a public meeting, or how will we find out what's happened?
Yeah, so um, you, you're accurate, once the budgets are submitted, and I think after July twenty, is that correct? What's the, what's the deadline?
July nineteen.
Nineteen.
To our office, fifteenth for their approval.
Right, once they're submitted and the um, the statutory date deadline has been reached, the only party who can modify a budget prior to the beginning of the year of the budget is the Budget Commission. And we have the authority of modifying revenue and expenditures to align budgets um, to meet the criteria that the commission has determined to be uh, proper. Um, we will do that in a, only in a meeting um, other than math cap computations, we may ask staff to prepare scenarios for us. But we do not discuss internally um, those changes prior to an open meeting. So that's actually what one of our items will be today, depending on what we have to do with Chester as well, we would probably use that meeting for both purposes.
And one further question, and when does that have to be uh, completed?
So the requirement of the Budget Commission is we have to complete our work no later than September first. So after September first, it can, nothing can be changed by anyone, we have a very short window and, and then there's none.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Any other questions by anyone? Okay, here none, um, is Jim on the hallway?
Was.
Let's wait for him, okay, if it's okay.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
He's just going to, welcome back, are you on vacation?
Uh, no, I was tied on Instagram, so I apologize for not. It is, it's Chester, so it is our problem.
Okay, we're just gonna pause for a minute, if that's okay with everybody. We, we should have like background music. Like Jeffer.
Could, you could.
Jeffer. Oh, you'll lose your front teeth, Chris.
I already lost them.
Yeah. Somehow. So. Just wandered off. We didn't have any.
For.
I don't know if she got some. They met.
She might.
Do you have, or something there from yesterday? Yeah, so you, you don't want to have Peter, have him go through my folder from yesterday's stuff. I have, I have, I mean, I got Peter's. Just one bad head.
Yeah.
Could you look through my, I, I wish I could.
This is why we love.
So do you, you want us to sign this or you wanna wait to see?
Um, if you want to sign it.
Yeah.
Which, is that the Auburn one?
My, my, we can't find it, we asked it, we couldn't find it, it may be tucked into my stuff.
The uh, the Auburn one, I wanted to vote yes on that assignment, so.
Okay, it's um.
I'm voting yes.
We've got both.
Here's the.
Oh, there's, yeah, hers and then we have theirs, so.
Well, this is all street, somebody hand me this. It was signed. I don't have Auburn, you gave me Chester's.
See, there's Chester's.
Okay, here's mine.
Good luck.
What do you want to leave as mine?
Or true.
Uh, no, we need it.
Yeah, that's, that's how we would have done.
Okay, this is.
That's fine, we've got another Chester one anyway, so.
Okay, so this is Auburn, so who, who motion for that?
Uh, he, what's on that signature there, Tim?
Uh, Chuck.
High motion.
You second, I'll vote yes.
Yes.
Okay, now we're gonna re, we're gonna reopen the hearing for um, Chester Township. And I, I'll let you start over again if it's.
Absolutely.
For Jim's benefit.
Absolutely. So when we uh, we left the, the hearing yesterday, um, I reached out to all three trustees. Uh, we had some discussion because as I mentioned, I came to see Chuck about two years ago about the reserve funds. We've done all the work, had Miller Dotson out, had everything done and ready to go. Understanding the importance of those reserve funds on all of our buildings and understanding the importance of not just having all the money lumped into the general fund. Um, there's already a motion and I have a copy of it in front of each of you, that'll be on the board's agenda for Friday morning at seven AM for them to consider directing the fiscal officer to create those reserve funds at each of the departments. Um, so they'll have that in front of them Friday, I had the conversation with the board, so they're all uh, in support and certainly understanding that it being placed on the agenda to get that movement and then of course, once created, moving the uh, the appropriate funds and because as mentioned yesterday, we've got several large scale projects of you know, to repair our buildings, you know, that we have a disrepair to include our road department roof, our salt dome amongst a couple other major projects that we applied for state funding on and got some for the salt dome, but uh, just between the two projects, it's about seven hundred thousand dollars to repair them, so it would be to move the funds into that reserve fund. So that will be considered Friday morning at seven AM.
So could, can you give us any? Um, maybe history as to why that it didn't take place prior to now? I mean, I, I know we talked several times two years ago and I know there was a lot of background work done. I, I'm not looking for you to throw anybody under the bus, but I think it's, it's relevant. I, I wanna make sure that the, the, that what you're offering us now is coming in the right context.
And so it's been every budget meeting that we've had in township between the trustees. Um, it's been discussed, is, you know, when are we gonna set these up, when are we gonna set these up? We need to set them up so that we could set aside money for these projects um, based on the building, the need for the buildings um, or other projects that we're working on based on that report, so. So upon your meeting Friday morning, we will endeavor to meet as quickly as possible.
Would you wanna meet Monday?
Monday morning.
If you have a chance.
Like nine o'clock? Possible.
The hearing at ten, so.
Will be done, this will be a five minute.
Well, you have to talk about the county. I have a two o'clock meeting, I can't, I can do morning, but I can't do afternoon. Um, you wanna, you wanna do Tuesday? Is Tuesday better?
We can do, if Chris, if you're good Monday at night, do you think it's gonna take more than an hour?
Well, we're gonna have to do Chester and the county.
Chester's five minutes.
Right.
Would you like us here? Or?
No.
Okay.
You just need to have the here.
The here, the here, the meeting's Friday morning.
And we just need to see, we need to see the outcome of that.
Absolutely, yeah, I'll send it.
Email.
Yep. Give me, you can virtual in.
Okay.
Well, it'll be virtual, they all are.
Okay.
And I hate to see you drive every day to, sure, I mean, although I do it every day, I don't wanna necessarily make you do it.
This is important to us.
Well, what time's your hearing over on Monday?
I mean, I, I don't have any data about the county's conversation right now, so maybe we just get this done. And then if we have to reconvene again, we'll do what we have to do.
Yeah.
From minutes. I, I appreciate the quick. I mean, you called me, and I just walk out of one meeting and run to another one, so you, you were very prompt in reaching out saying we discussed that we have a solution, we could propose, so that I think speaks volume of your level of cooperation and hearing what the message was. Um. I wish everyone had done that.
Okay.
Okay, so we're doing meeting Monday at night?
Yes.
Okay.
And if we can conclude all of our business, we will meet again.
Okay, so I, I moved, we scheduled a special uh, budget hearing for Monday, August twenty-sixth at nine AM to consider uh, Chester Township budget submission, the Geogee County budget submission and regular business.
A second.
Yes.
So appreciate.
Thank you.
Just to make sure.
Quick action.
Yes, sir.
Just a copy of the agenda with the name written, or do you?
Well, I'm assuming you're doing, you're, you're doing the resolution.
There'll be a resolution, yeah, there'll be a motion number attached.
Just a copy of the resolution.
Yep. So yeah, we'll send it out.
Yeah, whatever you normally do for your resolutions, so we understand you may not have your resolutions intact for the actual reserve funds, but the resolution ordering, ordering them to do them, I think is as relevant.
Okay, perfect, just wanna make sure.
We're happy to work with you on.
You have so.
Cause we.
A number of emails.
Yeah.
I think you gotta do.
And I know you've had got several conversations. We know what the issue is.
Appreciate, I would advertise it as a special. Thank you.
I mean, we would always advertise it. Since this is a hearing, we just wanna make sure that we do the legal ad if that's necessary.
Legal notice for budget here.
For the hearings.
Yeah, you'll have to.
Yeah, let's do another, yes.
Are, is there any other public comment? That now that you've heard that action, I think is pretty self-evident, but.
Uh, not for me, no.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have anything else?
Thankfully, no.
Okay, everyone did a wonderful job.
Yeah, hey, thanks for jumping on the Auburn stuff and.
Yeah, the Auburn, I mean, Auburn was, that was really.
That was quick work, yeah.
That was.
That wasn't too hard.
Okay, did you make a motion to?
I think we're out of here.
Second, yes.
Yes.